United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms. Mayor, if you would do the roll call, please.
I would be happy to.
Colin Trivitt.
Yep.
Lisa Collins. She is coming. Oh, she's here.
Hi, Lisa.
Lisa is here. Gary Dunlap.
Here.
Joe Gittens.
Here.
Cheryl Hancock.
Here.
Anita Jagazinski.
Here.
Kate Mayer, I'm here.
Tim Menninger.
Here.
Okay, thank you. With seven of the seven board members present, I would declare a quorum. Approval of the agenda. I would note that the agenda has been posted and distributed and sent to the media, and it was amended on the 22nd, so there may have been a posting prior to that. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as published.
I would so approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the agenda as published, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Public participation. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board relative to any item at this time? We ask that a five-minute time limit per person be followed. Please come forward, state your name, address, and topic to be addressed. I saw Mr. Brown get up, but he's signing in. Anyone want to speak? Okay, then, recognition and thank you. Dr. Carlson.
The district wishes to thank the La Crosse Community Foundation for recently awarding the Holman Nutritional Services Department a $1,650 grant to be used for funding meals for students in need. These funds are proceeds from the Jim's Grocery Bag, 14th Annual Golf Benefit, held June 4th at Forest Hills, and organized by attorney Brian Weber of Holman, of Johns Flaherty and Collins, as a memorial for Jim Goke. Jim, a former attorney at the same firm, initiated food drives in the La Crosse area to fight hunger. So again, very much appreciative of the grant donation to the school district.
Okay, thank you. Then moving on to reports and discussions. We have a number of reports and discussion items to come forward. We're hoping to keep to a tight schedule. We only have one hour for this meeting, but we have about 57 minutes to get done, so if we could keep each report to about five minutes, that would be appreciated. So the first thing is the HEA Collective Bargaining Agreement. Mr. Clark or Dr. Carlson?
I'll make a few comments, and then Mr. Clark, if Phil needs to add anything, he will do so. I might just address, if I could, you have two issue papers in front of you, Items 8.1 and 8.2, so I am going to address each of them, but they are separate. The first one is regarding the collective bargaining agreement with our HEA as far as base wages goes. In the proposed base wage agreement, the issue paper that you have is very similar format to what the board has been presented, actually, in the last two board meetings with some of our other employee groups. In this case, the proposed wage agreement, base wage agreement, allows base wages to increase a .226 percent. The district's negotiations team arrived at the .226 percent base wage increase by first considering the cost equivalent of a 2.07 percent base wage increase. The team then reduced this base wage increase by an amount necessary to cover the cost of a full step advancement wage increase. Allowing for step advancement, the longevity wage increase, reduced the base wage increase to the amount of .226 percent. This amount is, the distribution of this amount will take the form of a .226 percent per cell increase in the wage rates of the prior year's wage. It is the administrative, or the team's recommendation that the board approve the collective bargaining agreement with the HEA as presented. And then, in a separate action tonight, the board will be asked to consider what we refer to as lane movement. Similar to longevity, lane movement is not permitted any longer under negotiations and as a result of recent state law changes in the past few years. So the board is unable to negotiate this. However, the board may adjust wages via the lane movement. So in this action, the administration would be recommending to the board to allow lane advancement for eligible teachers in the 2013-14 school year for qualifying credits and degrees previously earned. That's just a real brief overview, and I would leave it for questions that the board would have on either one of those, but those are separate actions and recommendations this evening.
So are there questions?
Any questions? So I think just to, for the record, in the past, we have provided and recognized those traditional lane, recognize credits that they've received, and then provided a lane movement so that they could, as they take more education, more educational credits, they could then move along the lanes and receive a higher compensation.
In the past, yes, there, but there have been times, I believe as recent as two years ago, where there was not movement on that. Just like a year ago, the decision was made that there was not movement, what we would refer to as down on the salary schedule, or the longevity, or in other words, the steps. So it is the recommendation that, in the end, it would be recognizing both these steps and the lanes.
And so there is no, I think one of the reasons we looked at the lane advancement was because we had not presented to our staff any changes, and they were, in good faith, taking credits with the understanding there would be that recognition. And I think we, that may not always be the case. In the future, we may be looking at other ways to compensate them and give them credit and recognize the extra work they're doing outside of the school for those professional development. And I think just to go on the record to say that, because that's something that we haven't done in the past.
Yes, that would be correct, and I would, again, encourage, and I know as a board we have discussed, the interest that needs to occur as far as looking at and working with our teacher, our teachers, our teacher group, to look at alternative models, forms of compensation. And so you are correct.
And I think, as you said, we're looking at alternative forms of compensation and recognize those things, so I think that's the key thing, that in the future, it may not always be like this.
Yes.
So.
I have just a brief question. I'm assuming not every district in Wisconsin does this, because they didn't have to for a few years. I mean, just, I wondered, how many years has it been since our staff has gone on to accumulate credits without compensation? Has it been like three, four, something like that? Help me with that.
They were recognized a year ago.
Okay.
We actually, a year ago, that was part of even not advan, because, one of the reasons for not advancing a step is because the priority was to catch up from the previous year. So last year, there was two years' worth of movement on the lane, on the lanes for our teachers.
Right, yeah, I just, I'm very glad to see that, you know, as teachers.
So there really was just one year, though, that we didn't recognize that.
Yeah.
And I don't have the history beyond that. I don't have that available tonight.
That's okay. That's really all I needed to hear, and I'm proud of how our district honors that. And Mr. Menninger.
And we're looking to take action on this tonight, is that correct?
Yes.
That would be correct, Mr. Menninger.
So I guess more of a comment, and I just wanted to get my thoughts, is certainly been our tradition. We typically introduce an item at one meeting and take action at another. I'm generally supportive of this resolution. However, I'm uncertain why we are not following our usual pattern of openness and allowing time for public input. I'm interested in what other associations that the school district works with that may feel about their contracts that have recently been settled, as well as other public input. Therefore, when we come to the consent agenda, I am going to make a motion that we delay to our next meeting, which would be our typical pattern. Let me be very clear, it's not that I'm opposed, but I want to be consistent with our other practices, as well as allow for openness and time for community and other association input.
So this was not on our last agenda?
That would be correct.
On our, okay.
I'd have to look back to confirm, and be happy to do that, on the other employee groups, I believe the other five employee groups that we presented the past two board meetings. I'd have to look to confirm whether those were presented over two board meetings.
And I know the contracts weren't, but this being different, being non-negotiated, being a completely independent board action without negotiation, there really has been no opportunity for any input.
Sure.
From anyone. And, you know, that just seems to be outside of our normal practice.
From anyone outside of the board.
Yes, correct.
I know that there was a reason it was put on for this date. I think that had to do with payroll and the, this back pay and trying to eliminate having to do that. Now, will this require that we have to do two different, will this add a burden to the payroll department if we do delay this one and not the other one, and do the other one ahead of time?
Well, I think it will. Boy, and I'm, I don't know, I might ask Mr. Clark to respond specifically on how it may impact payroll. And if I, if I understand correctly, it might be that Item 8.1 possibly would be still considered this evening, but the interest is looking at 8.2.
That is correct, yes.
Okay. So if 8.1 is, let's just say, is approved, then how might that impact if we, if the board takes, considers the other action at a future board meeting? There'll be additional clerical time in the payroll office to process a correction to the original pay. This, and that's the cost doing, cost of the decision. If it's important, then you would assume that cost is necessary and just have to weigh that in.
And so the purpose of doing it together with 8.1 was that there would only be one of those changes or adjustments?
One of those changes, I think the other thing was that, and staff coming back and actually having returned many of them, and you know they've been active over the summer, but formally returning, the idea of having this concluded before staff returns, I think has an impact on staff as they return as well. Again, just a factor to consider, I understand Mr. Menninger's point as well.
Any other questions on that, on 8.1 or 8.2? Then 8.3 Budget Development Process.
Is everybody looking at me? I didn't.
Mr. Clark.
I could start, if you want. No, I'm good. You can add. So, you know, remember back in 2012, the board took some time to actually have some special workshops and discuss the budget development process and assign the finance committee some work on that. They came back to the board with a recommendation. The recommendation was actually to introduce some changes to the budget development process over two fiscal years. And we saw the first of that last year, used in the development of the 13-14 budget, and now comes time to implement the second set of changes in the development of the, get my years right here, 14-15 budget. And those activities are, actually started already. This adoption of this calendar and deployment of tasks to people will put in place formally what you approved a year ago as a two-year implementation process. So you have the calendar before you with the deployment and description of activities, as well as the dates of all those activities. I'd be happy to answer any questions. And Dr. Carlson, I'm sorry.
Any questions on budget development process? Right, then, community center update. Mr. Clark, did you have?
Well, I'll just make a comment, and then I might, I am going to turn it over to perhaps you and Mr. Clark. I have communicated with the board in the last couple weekly staff updates, specifically to, on legal opinion and direction on leasing of property. And so I hope you have had a chance, I think in your board folder, there's even a paper copy from the school attorney. And, you know, again, that's specifically talking about if, if where this might lead to is that the district would be leasing property in some form to, to serve in some form as far as the community center. So that's what has been communicated most recently with the board, and I would look to, again, I know that Mrs. Hancock and Mr. Clark are board and district representatives on the committee that continues to move forward, and so if you want to make some additional comments at all, or open it up for questions by the board, or some way, some direction perhaps, if appropriate for any of us.
Mr. Clark?
The committee in the last couple of meetings has worked hard on site development. While there's been some concept drawings and elevations for the community center, as you'll remember from the actions the board took on this, one of the clear messages was that the construction of the community center on the site should not interfere with the operations of the school. And that goes beyond inside the walls of the school, but how do we flow around the school building? Pedestrian traffic, bus traffic, visitor traffic. And so they spent a good amount of time on that, and I think we have a concept that will work well for both the students and community members using the facility. Much discussion about lease and what would the content of the lease be. There were 12, 13 items identified as categories that should be addressed within the lease. Some of the categories within the lease are related to other decisions that are being made on what's the potential governance model for this community center. Representatives from each of the municipalities is something that people feel strongly about, that that was the start of the collaborative effort and needs to be a part of the Board of Trustees model. That governance model has already moved to the creation of a bit of a job description, I guess you could say, for a Board of Trustees member. So those are some of the activities that are going on. They've engaged, do you engage a volunteer? Anyway, they've gotten an attorney to volunteer. Engage sounds like you're going to pay them. They found an attorney who's going to assist with the development of the lease agreements, governance bylaws, and those types of documents. What am I missing, Cheryl?
I've got a couple of things. So yes, Mr. Clark did a great job. We will be actually meeting with the volunteer, the attorney, tomorrow evening. There is a meeting tomorrow evening. In addition, we're talking about programming, so meeting and discussing that with some partners like the Y MCA, Gunderson Lutheran, and then fundraising. They've established some guidelines and timelines and some materials so that they want to get ready to go in the next few weeks. They also, I know the Holman Area Partnership for Youth is still going to be doing its talent show, so all you singers out in the audience, you know, sign up for that talent show this fall and November, and looking at continuing to do those fundraising kind of activities. So it looks like you have, I think that's.
I thought one more, that we continue to look at information on what will be the operational cost.
Yes.
And the comment that made me think of that was President Hancock talking about the programming. And what is the ongoing operational cost going to be? How will those costs be met? Will there be revenue generation associated with the facility? That's the ongoing, long-term cost. And then there's also discussion about the upfront, the capital cost, and that relates then to the fundraising and meeting the cost of constructing the facility. Lots of details to be worked through on those types of things, as well as if the district is going to lease the land and facility, how do we go about getting this constructed on the facility? Who supervises the construction? Who pays for the construction? Do the board's policies related to facilities' construction apply in terms of bidding and all of those things? So many details, some of it is what comes first. You can't jump all the way down the path on one topic because there's so many related issues that you need to take care of first. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think my role as a board member is to continue to let the collaborative committee know that we are very supportive of this program and activity, and that, as a school district, we're working very hard to make it work, not only for us, but for the youth in the community. So we continue to go there with that idea in mind. So I think that is it, then. Moving on to food service position, Dr. Carlson and Melissa.
Where I may, we've been working on a position. It's not entirely unique, but I'm going to let, I believe. I'll give it a start. Melissa, maybe you come up to the table. I know that you worked today with Mike to collect some additional data. So we have a food service staff member entering a second year of leave at one of our schools, and last year that was filled with a substitute position. And while we have many fine substitutes, as you all know, having a substitute or multiple substitutes isn't the same as having the same person there and knowing the routine of operations each day. In fact, last year, having to use a substitute to fill this position, it left us a little bit short of substitute employees in all our facilities from time to time. Our staff are very creative about ways of working around that, but I would say it's not a good long-term solution. So we had a number of vacant positions this summer, and that allowed us to be introduced to a number of really high-quality people that applied for our food service jobs. In fact, we had, in this case, more highly qualified people than we had positions available. And we got to thinking about the dilemma we have at this one school with a person on probably a second complete year of leave, not knowing for sure, and a really highly qualified person who wanted to work for us. And we said, we should make this happen. It will address some of the shortages that we had last year, and afford greater continuity and service to the families and students in the building. So we're advancing to you. We're going to call this a floating substitute position. The position will be, not floating a whole lot initially, because we're going to use it to fill this need. It will become a regular employee, not a substitute employee, but a regular employee in that position, and that'll help us to preserve our substitute list, to meet other incidental substitute needs that happen throughout the year. If the employee does come back from leave, we'll look to normal attrition to create an opportunity for this person, and we would use them then as a floating substitute until that need occurred. We could also evaluate it and say this floating substitute thing is the best we've ever, idea we've ever come up with, and keep the position rather than dissolving it when a vacancy occurs. So just trying to keep you informed of what we're doing and why we're doing it. We just think it's a great opportunity. We have some good quality people looking to work for the school district of Holman.
When you say floating, do you mean they're, they're going to go from school to school, possibly?
That could possibly, that could possibly happen, but we know that this kitchen's lived with a little bit of instability last year because of that kind of moving around. And so I think our initial plan will be to place this person in that one position and create some continuity in that kitchen, Joe. But that certainly could happen long-term with this position. I would just add to the same item that this is, does appear on your consent agenda tonight. Also on your consent agenda includes two other positions that actually the board already considered, but I wanted to, I felt needed to put it back on there tonight because at the previous board meeting, don't think it really was posted in advance as it should have been. And so going to ask you to take action on those two additional positions, much like you did last board meeting. And so you find that all under, I believe, 11.9, separate from the personnel report on your consent agenda. Questions for the food service position or, or the other two?
Okay, thank you. Then student activity accounts.
And that is Mr. Clark again. So you have a board policy, 662.1, that deals with student activity funds management. For those of you who've been on the board for a while, you may remember that, actually, our audit management letter, the letter that comes from the auditor each year that says, here's some things you could do better at. Student activity funds were on there in the late 2000s, 2008, if I'm remembering correctly, thereabouts. And we made a number of changes and board approved new policies to bring us in compliance with student activity fund accounting. Student activity funds are different completely from other funds in the district in that the funds should really be managed under adult supervision by the students, raised by the students, managed by the students, decisions made by the students. And there's really very few of our groups that fall into that category. As you may remember, we established the gift fund. At the same time, we really got much narrower in terms of application of the student activity funds. So many of the things that used to be in student activity no longer meet the definition and are somewhere else. So you have a very select group, and those are on the issue paper for you, where we have a student advisor, we have a staff advisor, there are specific policy provisions which these individuals agree to enforce, and the administrator agrees to oversee these as student activity funds. So annually, we bring these to you to have the board confirm that these are consistent with the policy 662.1, and administration has reviewed it to ensure that. We're advancing those three, four, pardon me, four groups for your consideration this evening.
Okay, are there any questions? This is on the consent agenda. I see one has been eliminated. Does that mean the fund itself, the SAD fund, has been eliminated, spent down, or it just doesn't fit anymore?
What might happen is that, and/or others, may come back to you for later consideration at this time, just prior to the school year starting. They did not meet all the requirements of a student activity fund, so we could not advance it to the board administratively. We couldn't make that recommendation. We left it on there unstruck so that you could see it was a drop, an intentional drop from last year, but could come back and be added.
Then we will move on to board member reports and discussion. Colin.
All right, I just want to start by congratulating the football team for their victory at home against Chippewa Falls on Friday. 14-0, I believe Chippewa had negative 33 rushing yards, so that was pretty impressive. It was also good to see the students come out, especially the freshmen come out to see their first high school football game, and then also the community members come out to support them. And then also tonight, up at the high school, the freshman mentor and renaissance program is running the freshman orientation, so just like to acknowledge them for giving up their Monday night to go help out with freshmen.
Thank you very much. It's good to hear those things, what's going on, so appreciate that. Lisa Collins. Okay, Gary Dunlap?
I have nothing at this time.
Joe Gittens?
Nothing.
Anita Jagazinski?
Wow, moving fast. I just wanted to welcome everybody back, and I would echo what Colin said. It was kind of fun to sit out on my front steps in the dark on Friday night and listen to the football game and those, my husband refereeing the football game. Hopefully, nobody was hollering at him. Yeah, it was kind of nice. It's hard to believe that it's that time of year again, football season, but yeah. Anyhow, welcome back and have a great school year to everybody.
Okay, thank you. Kate Mayer.
Again, reflecting, Anita, thank you to all of our teachers, staff, custodians, everyone, bus drivers. It's, it's starting up again, and it's exciting. Those of us who, well, I don't have grandchildren yet, I might, but I know many of us on the board too, and they're being picked up by bus drivers every day. Have a great year. Wonderful. I'm looking forward to the breakfast coming up this week to congratulate our teachers who have reached some milestones and welcome our new teachers. Just wanted to let my fellow board members know that I've agreed to a position on the Policy and Resolution Committee for WASB, and will represent this area. So as I get more information about the upcoming meetings, I think the first one is happening at the end of September, we might have some good input, and I'd be proud to be your spokesperson, so, yeah, that's it.
Well, thank you, Kate. Tim Menninger.
You know, I always have some comments. And first off, I want to congratulate
And first off, I want to congratulate the Holman High School band in the Corn Fest Parade. As a fan of Emerson Lake and Palmer, I was very excited.
Me too.
To hear the band as they came marching down the street. So it's just brought me back a few years and definitely enjoyed it, and they sounded awesome. So congratulations to them.
What did they play? What song, what Emerson Lake, like, from the beginning, or what song did they play? Sorry to put you on the spot, Tim.
No, and it was a slight version, I want to say, of Kearneyville, but it was good to hear them, but don't hundred percent quote me on that one. It is also a very exciting new school year, and certainly, again, welcome back the staff, the students, and looking forward to another great year. Also, a little personal exciting for me, they do not live in the school district, unfortunately for them, but my oldest granddaughter is starting 4K this year, so now I get to go round two through all of the things and looking forward to that as well. And then the last thing here, next Monday is Labor Day, and I always kind of joke at work that you should have to know the meaning of the day in order to get it off from work. And certainly, Labor Day is a great day to pause and reflect on the tremendous impact and contribution that labor has had in this country. And certainly, we know that firsthand from some of the great employees of the Holman School District, but wish everyone that while they're enjoying the day off, just take a moment and understand why they have the day off and certainly the contribution of labor in this country. So Happy Labor Day to everyone.
Thank you, Tim. And happy birthday to you, Tim. Is it your birthday today?
Yeah, but. I try to avoid that.
He's looking at me like a.
I don't know how you do that.
We should sing Happy Birthday.
No, we should. On the break, let's get the main done after some in between.
Well, happy birthday. I just want to, you know, Tim, I share with that, the looking at school through the eyes of a five-year-old and my granddaughter, I got to go school shopping with her and her mom, and I still, I told Anita tonight, what is a plastic folder? I don't know. I couldn't find them in Walmart or Target. I think I have to go into Office Depot. So, and then the tri-fold napping or resting pad, that, I think we've got a four-fold, but it'll have to do, I guess, so. But it was fun, and she's so excited as she's gone in, we put it in, off to the side in one of the living rooms, and she's unpacked it and packed it, and she just, come, look at this. I want to keep this one because there's extra tissue that we're donating to, I don't know. But it's just been fun, and to teach her the meaning of sharing because that whole concept that you put these in your box and then the rest are going to go for the, you know, the rest of the school year for the other students, and that's just been a lot of fun to do that. So, and so you do look through the eyes of that five-year-old at what impact we make on young people's lives, and it's beyond the school supplies and all of that, obviously. But it's been a lot of fun and seeing posts on Facebook with teachers who have got their rooms all set up, and they're so proud of their rooms and all the, and you know they've been in there many days already getting that done, and that's just, again, speaks to the work and the dedication of our staff, that they're here whether they're being paid or not, and they're not counting those hundred and eighty, hundred and ninety days. It's very rare to find those folks, and I don't think we tend to hire those folks. So we've got a great staff, whether it is our teachers or our custodians who have the buildings ready and beautiful, and our transportation folks, and the food service staff, and our educational assistants, and our administrators and supervisors. We just are blessed to have the people we have that work with us and are part of our team.
I was thinking, as you're kicking them off, the IT staff must have just been working beyond belief.
With all the wireless stuff happening.
Oh, my gosh. I can't wait. I think a whole bunch of people can't wait to see what they've been doing, so thanks to all of you.
Yes, thank you, and good luck to everyone for a new year. I think it's going to be a great year. So keeping moving on so that we have, stay on schedule, school board committee reports, you have the finance committee notes and the personnel and governance notes in your records or in your folders. Board meeting schedules, September ninth and twenty-third, October eighth and fourteenth, and October eighth, we have, oh, we have the WASB meeting, I'm sorry, the WASB is October eighth. The fourteenth and twenty-eighth are our board meetings, and then November fifth, we have a board workshop at about five-thirty, so please get that on your calendars as well. Board policies and administrative rules for review, animals in school, and student representative on board. Are there any, I think this comes forward to us so that you, if you have any input, if you see any drastic changes that need to be made, if the student achievement and learning committee is looking at making any drastic changes, then that would be a good time or a good thing to bring to the board, but otherwise, it's just an opportunity for discussion. So I know, I remember, animals in school, that was a big one, years and years ago, man, we went around and around, so hopefully the work has been done and it's just a review.
No, I know too, like forty years ago, there were pets in classrooms all the time, and I really respect that piece of it, but I also think we've also addressed the safety and allergies and everything else. I sort of laughed when I read there are certain things you can't bring to school, like ferrets and raccoons and wolf hybrids.
Darn it, that must have been an issue.
They gave me a chuckle. Somewhere, somebody maybe brought a wolf hybrid to school, but I appreciate the work that's being done here just for the safety of the school, and still to honor the fact that pets and animals in a classroom have a remarkable effect upon kids, especially special needs kids, and what they do for them and how they comfort them, and the responsibilities that kids use. Plus, I know that our science curriculum also has animals in the classroom, so to look at all of that is very important. I don't mean to make light of.
No, it's, yeah, it is very important, so. I would just note too that committees are organizing at this point and getting ready to kick off for their first meetings in the fall, and some have already. Some are, I know, seeking individuals, whether it's a staff member, a community person. I know the Personnel and Governance Committee is looking for members, an individual who had, from the community, and then maybe a parent or a member of the community and other staff to serve on that committee with us. But I know other committees are also forming and reforming. Some have renewals from their current membership, so they aren't necessarily in need of additional community people. But if people are interested, please reach out to the superintendent and let they all know, and we will see if we have openings where your talents fit. So then, moving on to district administrators' report, Dr. Carlson.
Well, in addition to what's been included, I would highlight that today, actually, we welcomed a number of new teachers, and so that was, it's always a highlight. We started out early this morning, that continues on tomorrow as well, and so thank you to so many people involved with that process, the hiring process, selection, and then specifically today for orientation. It was already mentioned about our welcome back Wednesday morning. Again, I would encourage or certainly invite all board members to attend as much as you can. We do start breakfast in the high school cafeteria at seven, and then at about eight o'clock, we're going to want to be seated in our gymnasium, which we are even starting the process of trying to cool down as much as possible because the gym itself is not air-conditioned, but working hard at trying to capture some cold air from other parts of the building. So please, and let Christina know, let myself know, if you think you're going to be able to join us, and we would welcome you to even sit up front near the podium. I would highlight also, in your board packet, you have the important continuous improvement plans. And while we don't have a presentation on those and take time for those tonight, I'd encourage you to review. Those highlight the work that, really the summative work done throughout the twelve, thirteen school year. And work has already started this summer on looking ahead to this year. And so thank you for our principals, supervisors, department heads for the work that they did to really close the twelve, thirteen, but actually use that to step right into thirteen, fourteen. A lot of information in there, and I would encourage, if you haven't already, try to spend some time with that. So other than that, I'll take questions, otherwise, nothing further.
Okay. Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. I read every single continuous improvement plan today, and that took me a long time. And I'm not complaining because as it took me that long, I realized how long it took people to put that together. The statistics, the data, the comparisons were phenomenal, and I know school districts across the state do that in varying degrees of excellence. I would say that our reports for any community member who wants to go online and spend time with us will be really impressed. Thank you. Thank you really to all the, all the staff. I don't even probably know the names of all the staff that helped with this, but those of you who are in administration know who they are, and please let them know, we board members so appreciate graphically presenting the information that was put together in all of those plans.
Yeah, I think it brings to heart the philosophy that continuous improvement is one of the policies of the school district, and that a strategic plan isn't just something we do a couple nights over the year and then put it on the shelf, that we really look to those things, and the onus is on us to do, as you said, Kate, read those, and it is very, does take a long time to read those. So we know it takes just as long, if not longer, for them to put those materials, to collect that information and put them together, but it's a lot of fun to see, especially the community involvement and what they, you know, accomplished with that, so. Okay, then, moving on to consent agenda items. We have nine items, and at this time, if anyone has any items they would like to have removed for independent consideration, please do so, let me know.
Item eleven point six.
Eleven point six, which is the HEA lane movement. Any item, other items to pull out? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exclusion of eleven point six. Is there a motion? Also moved, is there a second?
A second.
And discussion? Questions on any of the other items? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Then, on to item eleven point six, HEA lane movement. Is there a motion to approve item eleven point six?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And any discussion? Tim, I think.
Yeah, I do. Is, I guess as someone who's, you know, been upset with the goings-on in Madison, I've seen way too much polarization. There's a physics statement that for every action, there is an equal and opposite reaction. I have tried many times to maintain my beliefs and able to find a common middle ground amongst all this polarization and chaos that continues to exist. As a school board member and parent, I have been very supportive of the staff here at Holman Schools. As a school board member, we have approved an employee handbook very similar to the old collective bargaining agreement, and at every meeting, we introduced sections and then did not take action until a following meeting to allow time for public input and openness. As a school board member, I have supported the concept of having an advisory team of district employees who review and input into the handbook and other issues so that employees of the district, as many have great ideas, still felt they had a voice and that the board would listen, and we have. I have been supportive of pay that has put many of our most experienced teachers amongst the highest paid in the area. I do not want my action mistaken, and I want to be very clear that I am supportive of our hard-working employees. However, I have seen too many times in Madison agendas that have been rushed through with little public input. The end does not justify the means, and if we use the same process to advance an agenda, then we are no different than those that strive to use the same tactics to put forward a different agenda. It is important that we do not have an equal and opposite reaction. It is important that we stay above the fray and keep our beliefs and practices. It is therefore important that we follow our process and do not rush this through without an opportunity for public input, as well as input from other associations that have recently ratified their contracts for the coming year. Again, I am not opposed to this idea. What is troubling is the process in which this is being done, in which I cannot support, and would ask again that this item be delayed until the next meeting so that as a board, we are transparent, open, and listen to all, and not become like those in Madison that we oftentimes disagree with and do not agree with the process. And therefore, I will not be supporting this tonight. Not that I am opposed, but I have to maintain my beliefs and say that I am opposed to the process that is very equal to an opposite process used to advance a different agenda and cannot support it as a result.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who had any questions or comments?
Have we ever had this happen before, where something new was put on for us to vote on, and we voted that night because there was a special circumstance? I was thinking there was, but I'm new to this board, so.
I can't remember specifically. I'm sure there was.
Where something has only been considered at one meeting or brought up at one meeting?
Right, and it was presented by our administration, and we felt as a board that we would support that.
My answer would, my answer would be yes, but if you're asking specifically something similar to this, I can't, I can't answer that.
No, it just seems like I have heard this before, and again, I'm new, so I apologize for the question, in a sense, because I'm not sure how many times it happens, but.
You know, one of my other concerns is the other associations have all settled, and how does this make us look when those are all settled? And I would love to have some of your input, because this is not a negotiated item, and it just seems like we are, as we have tried to be open, community-based, listening to those of the community, it seems like we are doing the exact opposite in this resolution, and that has not been our tradition and not been our practice amongst members of this board.
Gary?
Yeah, I think that, I agree with Tim a hundred percent that we need to get input from everyone involved and everyone that has it, but I feel like with this issue especially, we've had, we've had a lot of feedback. We've talked to, we've talked to all the employees. It's not like, it's not like we brought this up and put it on the floor with no, with no respect for the other employees or feedback from them. We've had plenty of discussions, plenty of meetings, plenty of input from people. I agree with what you're saying, but I just don't think that using this, this object as a model for something that was, that was rushed through with, with no input, I don't think that's appropriate. I think that there was plenty of input, and I think that everyone agrees that this is the right thing to do, and including the employees it involves. I think you probably could have picked a better one to use as an example.
Maybe a question for Dr. Carlson then, is this is an unnegotiated, how have we gotten input from other associations and/or this association on this? Because this is an unnegotiated item, so I'm just curious. I mean, have we had gotten input from others on this, and have we had this out in the community before for any discussion prior to this night's meeting?
I, as far as, this is an item that we have conversations with employees about, but not through negotiations. I might have conversation with leadership, for example, but again, it's not, it's looking at what their interests are and things that are important to them, and this is one of those examples, but to, as far as anything formal, would be as far as under the negotiation meeting time.
I have a question too. I'm kind of, I'm just wondering, Tim, for clarification purposes, what would it look like to have more inclusion? I mean, specifically, what would that look like and what would the timeframe be?
I think generally, we introduce and then take action at our next meeting. It allows for the public an opportunity to see through the paper in our minutes what we've discussed. It allows for them an opportunity to, Nick, come to our next meeting and give public input. It would allow for those associations that we've already settled their contracts, an opportunity to say, well, this seems a little bit different because we've had our increases cut because of the seniority things and stuff like that. And I'm not saying I disagree with it, and I would support this and vote for it at the next meeting, obviously unless there was some public outcry that got us all to change our minds, but I'm just very interested in why we are not wanting public input into this particular issue as we have had in so many in the past. It just seems to me that as a board that has talked about openness and wanting public involvement, we're going against it with this particular piece of legislation that can be perceived by some to be a little bit troubling. I am not one of them, but there are some that could have some trouble with this resolution, and it just seems like we're rushing the issue without an opportunity for public discussion.
All right. Is there any reason why it has to be best tonight?
Jay already addressed that a little earlier, but.
I don't think the convenience of our payroll. I don't think the convenience of our payroll department would outweigh the needs of the public disclosure. I don't think
Well, I went back and looked just now. I just went back and looked at our last meeting where we approved, I think where we approved the HAFCE and we, it was not on the agenda before. And so, and you talked about tradition. It has not ever been the tradition of this board to get input from other associations about the agreement we are having with other associations. They certainly have that opportunity to come to us if they see that, but we, that's not been a tradition that we've had in the past.
And I agree that this is not a negotiated issue. This is not a contract. This is an action that the board is taking unilaterally. So I would truly agree as, as why I supported the HEA agreement tonight. That was for the first time out there. Those are very different. They are negotiated agreements that there's opportunity for input. This is a non-negotiated action by the board that is, is giving a association more than the 2.07% increase. I am supportive of that, but I think the public needs to be aware that that is happening and opportunity for input. And even though I am supportive, I am troubled by the events in Madison and I'm very troubled by their lack of debate, their lack of discussion. I believe in democracy and if they have the votes, I've always said, vote it up, vote it down, but allow time for public input. What I've been most frustrated with is the lack of public participation in the democratic process because that, to me, is a dangerous path that I've seen way too many times in Madison and I have been strongly opposed to that and therefore, I cannot support it, even if it supports a position I believe in. And in this case, I do and I want that very clear, but the tactics, to me, are very similar to those that we've seen where we are trying to circumvent them. This is not a negotiated contract. It is different than the HEA agreement. It is different than the food service that are a separate negotiated meetings that have been held. This is a solely non-negotiated board action with little opportunity for public input.
I have a question on the negotiations team and I was, have not been part of that process of, you know, and that involves community members, administration, correct, and board members and things like that, or Personnel and Governance Committee. Is there a discussion generally about, you know, an action like this, maybe not specific, but has there been discussion and feedback from those members on those committees? Because that's been my impression of what's been discussed.
Right.
Is that wrong or is that correct or?
Well, we don't do community involvement in the base wage negotiations. We have a representative of the association or the employee group and then we have a school board representative and administrative. Where this differed is that as we, as the administration was looking at the base wage negotiations and if, as the steps became important, so longevity became important to the HEA, it resulted in only a point zero two
Point two-two-six percent.
Point two-two-six settlement and it would not allow for us to recognize the credits. So the administration, the credits that they took and so it was brought to us as a recommendation to separately allow for the lane movement to happen and recognition of those which adds to the cost of the settlement. And I think that's where we are here then today.
Yeah, just to reinforce, this is administrator's, administration's recommendation and just to reinforce in that, maybe to further clarify, it's something that with, as a result of my conversations, my relationship working through with, with that, that specific group, this is where the recommendation I decided to bring forward. And so, and I, I understand it's up to you if the timing is, because I feel that's the, that's the real question or
Yeah, that is the issue. And as I've said, I'm not opposed to the idea, but because it's non-negotiated, you know, we don't allow other associations to have input into the negotiations, but this is a non-negotiated board action. And as a result, this is different.
Yeah.
And I'm just concerned that some may have interest in that and if they do, I'd, I'd love the opportunity for them to be heard. They may not, I mean, but to me, that, that is why we have typically introduced a resolution at one meeting and then don't take action till the next one to allow the opportunity for that.
But we also, I think we could probably research and find other examples where time-sensitive things were needed, that we did bring things just to one meeting and pass them. It does not happen very often, Tim, and your concern is so noted, but I would just say, if this is something that we're going to do anyway.
And we did, we did exactly that tonight. The one before that was
Yeah. Yeah. So there is a motion on the floor and a second to approve item eleven point six, which would be the lane movement. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion passes. Then, adjournment. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? A second to adjourn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
We are adjourned, Tim.
Is this where I stand up and say shame now?
No.